I call this meeting to order. It is ten a.m. Uh, roll call, sir, Commissioner Frith.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Here.
Commissioner Mullins.
Aye.
And Commissioner Gallagher.
Here.
For speaking present.
Okay, stand please for the pledge and the invocation as you desire.
Let's use two flags of the United States of America. And see the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious day. We come to you to do business for the county residents. We ask that you give us the courage, the wisdom, the serenity, to do what is always right in your eyes. And we just pray to you and say thank you for this great nation. This great nation of men and women who are serving this country, overseeing abroad, watching them, bringing them home safely. And we just say thank you for all that you've given us. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our consent agenda is minutes of last week's regular meeting, reporters, and auditors monthly report. May I have a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, we will now open to the regular session, and our first item is opening of annual bids. Big day, big day. Uh, they're going to announce the category, then open all the bids in that category, and display the bids. Uh, kinda go informal now, uh, but you can come up when say your category is finished, you can come up and look at some. Please don't alter any bids. We can photograph them however you wish. Uh, we will not act on any bids today. They will have to go through a thorough diligence, make sure that they're inspected, correct, all that. And then you will be notified of the winning bids in short order with that. So what category are you on?
Category is, this is road and bridge. This, right now, is aggregate. I'm gonna put everything from road and bridge on this table. The other things will be on these tables here. This is base rock materials. And contact engineer solutions. We have multiple different items. You're gonna have to look at it, 'cause they'll have to be analyzed, but you can come up and take pictures of them when they're done.
Is that the end of that category?
No.
Oh.
Well, I mean, it's grabbing.
Yeah. Central stone. Police ready mix. Triple-A Xalner materials. And she's opening them right in front of you, so that they're not sealed. Commissioner Gallagher.
We will categorize these, uh, once they're all laid out.
Okay.
You can overdo that once I go to this next.
Yes.
Okay. Tires for sale.
So that's all the aggregate bids?
Yeah.
Okay, you're not sure, okay.
We got a pile, we got about twenty something, so some of them may contain with that. These are, we try to separate them, like, these are tires. This is Procel tire.
And this is the spellbinding moment of this meeting.
And I gotta tell you, we would does a great job of keeping track of it, and keeping track of the records, keeping track when they've arrived. Big river quarry. This is Culver pipe. Waterworks specialties. Patriot ready mix. This is, uh, tires also. Test drive. A separate bill that bid from test drive on tires.
Still ones for road bridges, one for sheriff.
I think this table's gonna get filled.
Separate, this is for signs.
I think this table's gonna get filled up.
Probably will. Tires. Wrong stars. And that's the sheriff. There's several bids on the truck, uh, some with sheriff, some with the other department. This is aggregate. Lead belt, asphalt, mineral area asphalt. That's why we're using this table. This has got more bids than any of the other categories. Back to signs. This is G and C supply. Okay, this is Capas minerals.
Salt.
And salt.
Set it down. We'll separate. We'll sort it.
Okay. Diamond oil. Oil here.
We have five more for road bridge. Hey, we got five more bids for road bridge. Then the road bridge guys are gonna come up and come separate these, help with individual bids. You're welcome at that time, get them up and photograph them. Yeah, you guys are doing this new year.
Signs. Signs.
Here. You got signs?
Concrete and salt.
What do you got? We got tires.
We got tires.
Sand oil company, this hydraulic.
This is, uh, aggregate. Here's concrete.
Uh, this is another tire bid. There you go. With sheriff.
This is pine, no, this is soil.
Road oil.
Okay, you have the motor oil.
No, you have that.
And this is road oil.
Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Commissioner. We have about five bids that are unmarked on the outside, so we're gonna have to open those to see if they are contained in the road and bridge or in other types of bids.
Probably not.
Go ahead, I'm gonna back up here. How'd you know, yeah? Um, yeah, so far. Here, no, here's another. Here is one asphalt, and this is.
Usually landscape, water maintenance, so is that a difference?
Where's all our aggregate? These four. And this one.
Yeah, trucks.
Tires, yeah.
We believe this is all the road and bridge bids. But we're gonna be opening the others, and putting them in categories. If there's one that's unmarked on the outside, and it is road and bid, it is here on time, and it is sealed, but we may not know that for a couple minutes, until they're all open. We think you've got them in the right categories, but you can't tell if you don't have anything on your outside envelope. They'll have these ready to sign, being prepared all the way. That's all for road and bridge today? That's all we got so far. There's still one folks still got a question. Alright. Where the office supplies at? Maintenance will be on this table. If you've submitted a maintenance bid, when it's done, office supplies will be here, okay?
Now, are you guys ready?
Yes.
Okay, if you're really interested in road and bridge bids, you may come up, photograph, if however you wish.
We have them grouped together, for what you bid on.
In Spain, they have the running of the rules. Apparently, St. Francis County, they have to open the bids.
Well, I did throw an over in on there. I didn't understand what we started. You know, I didn't get that, uh, you know, I couldn't talk to John Webb. Looked like I should've been at the table, but I didn't know this. So they, I figured when I just saw twelve and eight. Excuse my language.
You don't wanna be filming some guy's cross?
You know.
I gotta lay him down.
So you got the audio on? I won't say anything.
He doesn't always let you know he's got the audio on, let me tell ya. I made that mistake once.
What was that? What'd you say?
I said, I meant he was a guard.
Do you stay on the live feed?
Yeah, it's. Got ten people watching. We're talking to Josh, sure.
If you can, we've got the same thing next year. If you would put your, what you're bidding on, on the outside of the envelope, it would be helpful. Because blank envelopes won't tell us what category you receive. We've got multiple categories.
My table with echo.
Sea tractor.
You think they would put me on the pay? They're using my videos to go back on.
You getting your own table to start.
Oh, yeah.
I guess you don't get residuals on those, do you? She keeps.
Huh?
She thinks you're hot.
What do you got in there?
Just getting warmed up.
Office supplies are right here. If you have bid on the office supplies, and you would like to see the bids, or take pictures, they're on this table right here. Office supplies. Maintenance. Maintenance is right here. Anything that does, does with maintenance. Okay, lawn care. Test control. Janitorial supplies is on this table right here. You're gathering the last item over here. Food is hoping to be on this table. Food supplier.
Food supplier, not food.
Well, the clerk has to take them, and they can't keep them.
Right, food services ready? You can go see those.
The process is, that all of these bids will go to the clerk's office for photocopy. And then the auditor gets a copy, and the department has to get a copy for evaluation. Place, decide, all those groups of collectors, you know. Okay, last call for bid review. Sounds like to take her down. And we're gonna leave these out for the rest of the meeting, so if you have that chance to see them.
I should move them into our office.
Okay, I already owned it.
Thank you to all the bidders. We appreciate you.
Okay. Let's go back into formal session. And we're going to talk about the annexation of the city apartment they want to change the city limits at, uh, to include the eleven fifty-nine Hazel Lane property. So the clerk gets back, we'll talk about it. Kevin, do you want to talk about this annexation?
This is the heritage property, as, he's been dividing it up. And this is, uh, I believe it's the nursing home. It's a, uh, I don't know if it's a nursing home, or a senior living center, but it's under considered, it has to be taken in, it has to go on the city's utilities, uh, to function.
Is that south group, or?
No, it's kinda catty corner. It's where you're going up Maple Valley. You see it, uh, as you go in Maple Valley, it's on your left, that area there.
Alright.
If you've been out there, they've been moving dirt, and then.
Okay, uh, so, does this require action, or just enforcement?
I think it's informational. I don't, I don't think it, I think you can acknowledge receipt, but you can't authorize or come.
Okay, then it's important, thank you. Uh, request for waiver of penalties and late fees, and I'll take care of this one. I had a nice discussion with Tracy Black yesterday. Uh, she acknowledges that her check was postmarked on July, January twenty-third, uh, three weeks late for payment of her taxes. And she says she had no problem with paying her penalty and interest for that month. But we had trouble getting a quorum together, and she was on the agenda every week. So basically, it was commission's fault that we haven't acted on this. Our rule is that we don't waive penalty and interest unless, uh, it's a county's fault. And in this case, I believe it was the county's fault for that. So I would, gotta make a motion. I wouldn't make a motion that, uh, we, uh, charge her the penalty and interest for January. Waive it for February, March, if she makes full payment by then, March.
Let's take in your motion.
Uh, have motion second. Any questions, Matt?
I'd like to apologize, it was like, uh, we left a quorum, uh, with the recent passing of my father. We were, I would, I couldn't make the meeting, so, uh, I apologize for that, but, uh, we think you understand, so.
Absolutely, yeah. And we appreciate what you've been doing, we appreciate that. Okay, I have, any other comments, questions? I have a motion second, all in favor? Alright, thank you. Uh, and I'll call her, let her know about the rule about payment by then, March. Sales tax collection report, you must, Tracy, I can't.
I'm, and, and it is up, um, from last year this month.
Okay, about seven percent. That's a good thing.
That is a good thing.
That's a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. We didn't have this kind of issue.
Exactly.
Appreciate that. Okay, uh, robotic computers, man. There you are.
Actually, uh, it's gonna be Chris Warren. Getting some good news from Lab Revolution Four-H. He's a Four-H volunteer and parent. Hi, Chris.
Hello. Uh, thank you for your time, uh, this morning. So, again, my name is Chris Warren. I'm a parent slash coach slash volunteer with the St. Francis County Four-H Lab Revolution Robotics Program. Uh, from what I understand, the county funds the zoo extension office, which then in turn helps, uh, fund Four-H programs. Uh, so we've had some exciting times recently. We just wanted to share the news on that, and get the word out on that. Just to tell you a little bit about Lab Revolution. Uh, it's a place where youth and families, uh, meet. Uh, right now, it's located in the factory in Farmington. Uh, kids come together to learn together, to build, create, share together, to collaborate together. Uh, they learn about electronics and programming, robotics and more. In particular, uh, they take on Lab Revolution's Vex Robotics Program. Vex Robotics is the focus. So they're learning the mechanics of a robot, the engineering behind building a robot, how to pro, how to program, uh, the robot. So just to give you a little more information about that. So my son Chase, this is our fourth, our, this is his first year, uh, being involved in Four-H. And then as a dad, uh, I get to be involved as a volunteer there as a coach. Uh, so Chase goes to robotics, uh, two days a week for two hours each. So he's spending four hours a week focusing in on, uh, building a robot with his team. And on his team is another boy named Noah. And Noah's grandpa, uh, is a volunteer there as well. So it's pretty cool, uh, two boys, a dad and a grandpa. We get to spend four hours with those boys, uh, just giving them encouragement, uh, and they get to build this robot together. If you ever stop by there, uh, you can go into the room, and you'll see a high school team with high school students building a robot. Uh, there's elementary, middle school students working on their, uh, robotics together. It's just a really cool, uh, exciting environment. These kids hanging out face to face, yes, they're on their computer still, but they're doing a lot of hands-on things, uh, that a lot of kids don't have exposure to. Uh, Ambos is our fearless leader, and she puts in countless hours. Uh, but when you walk around there too, you'll see all the adults. Lots of dads, lots of moms, grandpa, uh, but also retired folks that are just giving of their time, uh, investing into these kids. And a little side note to that too, uh, the, this, this, we, we have a good space, but it is a limited space. There's actually kids that are on the waiting list, uh, that we have to figure out how to, how to fit them in maybe at some point, if we can figure out the space and funding, that kind of thing. Uh, so from August, uh, to now, these kids have been building and coding and competing with their robots. Uh, all the teams have done well this robotic season. Uh, it's been really neat to see their progress. You can look at, uh, the robot that they had at the beginning, and then they competed with it, uh, and then they had to make, uh, improvements or changes, or maybe parts of the robot they really liked, so they didn't change, that kind of thing. So it's pretty night and day when you get to the end of the robotic season, uh, what the robot, uh, looks like. But last weekend, and this is what we really want to talk about, uh, the teams went to the Missouri State Competition, uh, and St. Francis County did really well. So to recap it, we took four of the top spots in the main competition called the Teamwork Challenge. Uh, two of those teams took first and second place overall. Uh, we had four of the five skills competition scores, uh, the top robot skills award. Uh, we won an amazing award, build award, think award, two excellence awards. Uh, but last but not least, this kind of wraps it up. Uh, so Vex gives four spots, uh, to Missouri teams, and St. Francis County took three of the four spots, uh, to move on to the Worlds competition. So I think that says, it's pretty awesome. Uh, so that said, this is what we wanted to get the word out on too. Uh, Worlds is in Louisville, Kentucky at the end of April. Uh, and we basically have about a week to figure out that funding. Uh, the cost of the trip is an estimated sixty-one hundred dollars. Uh, but in the last forty-eight hours, we've raised over forty-five hundred.
Woo!
A special thanks to U.S. Tool. They gave a generous, a generous donation to that. We have about sixteen hundred left to go, so we're just trying to get the word out. Uh, ten dollars is an awesome donation, just like a thousand dollars is. So, uh, we've had just people give, but businesses give as well. So we just want to get the word out about that, and superpower.
How do we come and connect?
So there's a GoFundMe page set up, uh, and that's being spread around on Facebook. Uh, you can email me, chriswarren@gmail.com. And then businesses too, we can give you the address and where that checking is if we can too. Thank you very much for your time.
Congratulations.
I already take it. My wife and I went to the Nationals a couple years ago in, in St. Louis, and I, it's one of the best STEM, uh, prep that's going around the country. It's a huge, like the Super Bowl of, uh, that day. It was rocking, and, and there was thousands of kids from all over the world that were there competing in these things. And I, it's tremendous honor for the, for, uh, a group that this body sponsors to be representing, uh, this Missouri and this thing. So if we get the chance, we need to go to your GoFundMe site.
Yes, please.
My granddaughter and I have volunteered for this for years. And if you wanna have a good feeling about the next generation, go to one of these sessions. As a judge, I get to the privilege of talking to these kids. They are right. Not only electronics, but mechanics. Because they've got to build a, a robot that'll do the, excuse me, the functions, and doing the job, and not tip over with all the situations that happen. And correct for that, and do all of it, and a lot of it's all automatic. It's all, it's hands-off. You gotta set it up so it's automatic. So then they get to actually operate the robot too. But if you want to cheer up about the next generation, go to one of these competitions. It is fantastic for robotics that we have. And what I always enjoyed was interviewing the teams. It's always the littlest girl that's the leader of the team. And she's most outspoken, and she knows what she's talking about. And these big old birdly guys, yeah, that's right. It's amazing, the personality, seeing.
Yeah, our top, our, uh, middle school girls team did really, really well. And will be going to Worlds.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And we do promote this.
Donations can be dropped off at the extension office downstairs as well, right, Chris?
Yes.
They may have to.
St. Francis County Four-H Robotics.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Let's raise your meeting, next week, same time, same flex. Other business corresponds, everybody that corresponds. Level of Commons. Departmental reports. We have a, uh... We have a, uh, auditor's report. And I comment, the commission shows that we're twenty percent all over, only sixteen percent a year. That MAC dues is a one-time-a-year deal, and that includes some insurance coverage. So, that's why it's a twenty-one dollar dollar. But that's why, and that... That'll distort our budget for the rest of the year, a big part of the rest of the year. Uh, but that's how we're doing, and I think overall, we're at thirteen percent and sixteen percent a year, so we're doing alright.
From this area? Yesterday, I believe Amanda, uh, was able to get on, they gave an opportunity, so that all the sample ballots are available now on our website. So, if you want to see what they're at, we have thirty-seven different ballots.
Yes, but the one online is just our, like, publication, so it hasn't all combined.
So, it combines anything that could possibly be dependent upon where you live, and it's got the ballot language for the schools, the cities, uh, everything that's on the ballot. Uh, April 2nd is now online, so you can go look at it and read it if you don't want to wait until you get into the voting book to know what you're voting on.
Okay. Our Road Bridge wants to talk to us. We have a situation going on.
Um, okay, as... Well, a lot of you are well aware, there is a huge problem throughout the county of trash, um, being scattered throughout the county. And I want to start off by saying that, first of all, the Road and Bridge Department does road maintenance and road repairs. We really do not have a dedicated crew or a dedicated procedure of picking up scattered trash, cups, napkins, paper, the things that you see scattered on the road. However, we do have an Adopt a Road program, and through the commission and through the volunteers that do that, they will bag the trash up, and we will pick the bags up, as we also will pick up large items, like if someone dumps out a couch or, um, a TV and things like that that we... We regularly have to pick up. But this was an issue yesterday that we had a pothole crew, um, in a... In a remote area, uh, filling potholes as... As we're addressing for the last two weeks and will be for the next month. Anyway, they, uh, witnessed an individual, and it was a trash hauling company, that just backed up to one of our county roads and just raised the bed of the truck and dumped the trash right in the road, as you see there. Huge pile of trash. We witnessed this happening. The, uh, driver fled from us, and we promptly called the Sheriff's Department. They dispatched a deputy right away. This individual in this, uh, company truck then ran for a long period of time, and then eventually parked his truck, jumped out, and ran into the woods. So, we did not catch the individual that done this, but we do have the, um, the company that he was driving for in the truck, and it has since been impounded. So, this is an instance where we... We have a crew out there today, uh, picking this truck up. Now, we've already hauled two dump truck loads off and probably had two or three more to clean this mess up. Um, but it's just another instance where trash on the county roadways is becoming a problem. And we are inundated with calls of people saying, "Hey, there's trash out on my road. It looks bad. It's very unsightly." And we go out there to check it out. Well, it's just cups and paper and trash, scattered trash, that we don't have the time and manpower, the resources to pick that up. However, if someone wants to adopt a road, then we will pick it up once it's in bags. But I... I'd like to commend the Sheriff's Department. They responded right away, and our guys are out there. It's... It's a mess, as you can see. So, I don't know if this is something that's gonna continue to happen, but we have been in contact with prosecutor's office. They are gonna be pursuing legal matters, uh, the prosecutor says.
Yeah, as I said, that's what we have to do, because we've been... When I... I made this huge issue a decade ago. Forty-seven million dollars we spent annually in counties and state picking up trash, of money we could spend on bridge repairs, and then forty-seven million bucks. And then the prosecutors, especially in the past here, and... And we've let them off and said, "Well, go pick it up," and... And we... We won't say, "We have to hit somebody hard sometime when they do something like this, because they... They need to have the full..."
We... When we see things like, we want to pick this up because it will attract or magnetize other people who want to dump to it if you don't get it out there.
And did you say that looked like they'd been dumped there before, or do you mean not just this one?
They... They had... Yeah, it was more than just one load there that had been dumped. It had been dumped over the period of twenty-four hours. Um, but it was a company that was going around, you know, charging people to pick their trash up, and they just dumped it on the road, said they... Like, in the landfill. Um, but we're cleaning it up today. We will have a detailed report on what it costs us to pull away from our other jobs today to clean this up, fuel, manpower, and then, of course, our disposal fee, um, to get rid of this. But it will be cleaned up today. But just... I... I just want people to be aware that we do not go along and pick trash up along the highways. Now, we are in the process, and we're still on the waiting list, to start with the prison, at the Bonter Prison, to have an inmate crew to come and do that, to dedicate it, to do... To do just that. But, uh, with the limited crew that we have, uh, we just don't have the manpower and the time, the resources to do that.
Gary?
Yeah, um, now, I'm not talking about littering, but if we come across something like that, who do you suggest we call? If it's on the county road, you call us, and we'll come and pick large amounts like that up. But just scattered stuff along the roadway, we just... We don't address that.
Right.
Couches, TVs, um, occasional tires that we see, that we pick those large items up. I mean, we just... We just do.
But this is a road hazard here.
It was in the middle of the road. I mean, they dumped it right in the middle of the county road. That's pretty audacious as well. Well, it was in a remote area. I don't think they expected us to be out there, and normally, we're not. Just luckily, we were there potholing in that area, and our crew saw it and called me and addressed it, and we got open parties.
Uh, last week, we talked about the landfill and the transfer station, and how it's not really making profit, and how they had looked at raising the tipping or the dumping fees there. But the more you raise those fees, the more this you add. And so, it's probably at the peak of what they could charge to do that. So, it's... It's a situation. And this is a, uh, a report for your information. Any questions? Yes, Chris?
Yeah, Harold, was this, uh, Clay, to your point, that was this a company that does trash pickup in the county?
Yes.
That we probably all know?
Um, well, it's not one of the more well-known companies.
It's kind of a private individual business.
It's not a... It's an LLC, small LLC.
Okay.
Thank you.
Were you armed in telling us who it was?
Well, it's...
This is not criminal law.
Let's don't do that.
We're not accusing them of crime.
Let's don't do it.
Mm-hmm. It's... Well, yeah, we are. Well, not in this room.
If you want to contact the prosecutor's office, and they want to tell you that, that'd be up to them.
Let's... Let's just don't do that. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Last week, we announced that we had been working on a penalty clause for the elevator. That has now been signed and approved, and in red to see what that clause is. It may be five hundred dollars per business day penalty that they're late after four weeks' schedule time. And this, uh, was... Is scheduled to begin on May 13th. That's still to be finalized, but that's what we're looking at, and will continue for up to four weeks. And the courts are working with Brian on this, so everybody just tend to... Uh, any other marginal reports?
Uh, let me say that we had a hundred and seventy people, I think, that do their, uh, pole training, pole workers, come and work on it last week. We had four different sessions, as many as sixty in one, twenty in the smaller session over at the Webber Road location. And, uh, it was a great opportunity for them to get to go up and work on the machines, practice on the machines. And, uh, Jackie in our office did a heck of a job coming up with about a ten-page detail that if you're not there, this is exactly what you do in the morning. First, you... You do this, you swear in, and it's just line by line, every... Every... Uh, she did a great job. I want to commend her and all the people that showed up for that training, because these people work fourteen-hour days. They only do it once, two, three times a year, and they're dedicated to doing what we have to do. We have to have... We're looking for a couple more people. Uh, we won't use them all, but we have to have same amount of Democrats, Republicans. It all has to match properly. So, just want to let you know that more than a hundred and sixty people showed up that day. It took almost a two-hour course.
I understand, well... Any other departmental reports? I mean, re-adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
What's the best time to find three? Chris, what's your question?